Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for all the many blessings that you bestow upon this community. Father, as we approach this weekend, Memorial Day recognition, Father, we ask that you bless those that have served us and given everything, Father. We also ask that you bless those that have run for office to lead our community, who will be determined tonight to go forward, Father. We also ask you bless the staff and our first responders that support you today. Fathers, these things we ask in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before getting to our meeting, I have a couple of announcements. Will, I understand he's going to be leaving us here shortly.
Oh, yes, sir. That's correct. This will be my, I'll leave the county at the end of the week, so this will be my last IBC meeting. Jason Willbanks, who's in our office, will be taking over for me, so.
Jason, good to have you.
They will date him with questions and concerns.
Had you escaped, right? Well, Will, we really appreciate your service to the planning commission and we wish you well on your review.
Appreciate it.
We have a review of our meeting procedures. I noticed a couple of new folks in the room, so we'll go over these. Planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Green County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations that conform to the comprehensive plan and planning zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants will have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of applicants to make presentations on requests and to address any conditions of factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings, public comments and public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated between the speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding the position. You should avoid being repetitious. If you group as a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your grievances and positions in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate the speaker's time if the speaker agrees personally attacks or corroboration of this process, which would greatly appreciate. First item is to approve the minutes of the Island Planning Commission, April 16th, 2024. There are no necessary changes occurred.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Island Planning Commission from April 16th, 2024.
You have a motion. You have a second. Second. A motion in a second. A discussion on the motion. You're going to call for the vote. All in favor, that motion is okay. Last thing. Duncan, you have not heard. I see any abstentions. Yes. That, first item of business on our agenda is SP 24-7-113, Sky Lane Court Site Plan. Considered site plan approval for a new 8,800 square foot two-story building and associated infrastructure at 113 Sky Lane Court, St. Simon's Island. Parcel 0414443, Zone Plan Development District PD. Jake Lemings, Roberts Civil Engineering Agent for Robert Burr, Green County owner. And this is, this is an item that was deferred at our last planning commission meeting, April 16th, 2024. Stephanie Lee, Plating Manager.
Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Lee, Plating Manager. And as the chair said, this was, there was a public hearing held April 16th, and it was deferred for some additional information to come back before the commission. So I'll just kind of highlight real briefly where this project is. It's near the St. Simon's Airport, off of Island Drive and Sky Lane Court. And just some of the additional information that haven't asked for. I know there were questions at the April meeting about the surrounding buffers and what authority the planning commission had to ask for more landscaping or change landscaping in these buffers. There was also some questions about the airport surface layer and just kind of general landscaping. And I know we also had some questions from, for the surrounding neighbors about the access onto Island Drive as well. So this is also included in your packet. This is what was submitted to us for the airport surface layer. And this is where I probably asked Mr. Burr from the airport to elaborate anymore if you have any questions about what all the different lines on this mean. But basically, it's kind of the invisible surface, imaginary plane is what some other folks refer to it as. And this is what we look at in determining whether a height is appropriate for a building that's near the airport or within a certain vicinity. So it's something mostly our GIS department and our, the airport commission work in tandem on to really evaluate new, new development in the county. And the applicants did submit a site plan, just some additional information, as well as one change. At the bottom of the screen is Island Drive. Their main access into the property and their parking is off of Sky Lane Court, but they do have an alternate access that will have a garage door into the building, and that is located right here. The last site plan that you all saw was a wider entrance at 24 feet. It has been reduced to 12 feet. We did talk with our engineering department about the reduction to 12 feet for a commercial driveway, and they did feel that it was, was fine in this location to have that reduced if that is something that the planning commission would like to approve, but that would come back to you all if you, you feel it's appropriate for the site plan. And then the buffers that we talked a lot about, we did confirm the only required buffer for this property is adjacent to the residential, and that would be on the left-hand side of the screen here. There is an existing 50-foot buffer, and part of the discussion at the last meeting was kind of who has authorization to do anything within that area. The 50-foot buffer is not part of the airport lease, and it is not part of what Mr. Woodman is leasing from, from the airport. So it is under county control at this point. Neither the airport or Mr. Woodman both really have any kind of authority to do anything within that buffer, and Mr. Woodman can elaborate more on kind of that relationship. But there is, there is some extensive landscape or vegetation within that. And let me just go to a photo that we did. Yeah, so here's a photo that shows what that buffer looks like. So what they're, what the applicant is asking for is, can this existing 50-foot buffer really be, be left as is and be considered as their buffer from the residential area? So in that sense, there would be still a modification to the required buffer because they would not be doing an additional type A, which is a 12-foot buffer with a fence, but they're not going to be doing an additional 12-foot plant gate onto their property. So it would technically still be a modification to the buffer requirement in order to, to allow this to satisfy. And then, as we noted at the last meeting as well, they are asking for a variance from the tree ordinance because they're not proposing a tree plan for this site, although it is required for this area of the airport.
Did you say that last sentence?
So, I'm assuming if there's any noise. So they're, they are requesting a variance to the tree ordinance. This, this property is required to have a tree planted here at the tree ordinance because of, because of the PD and the, and the area that it's in, in the airport, but they are asking for a variance from that because they've not submitted a tree plan. So that would be something the commission would need to evaluate to determine if they want to allow that variance to the tree ordinance.
Yes, sir.
So there's some other photos that the applicant submitted of the site, so they can go into more detail on those when they come up. I'd be happy to answer any, any questions or if you have any more questions with staff before the applicant comes up.
If you may ask, Mr. Chair, if I may ask a question. The auxiliary entrance, secondary entrance, has been reduced to 12 feet. Was that at the request of the applicant?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, the county did not require that. The applicant did ask if they could have a reduced driveway, and the engineering department felt that that was appropriate for this location if the commission wants to grant that.
Seems like less asphalt's better, right?
Right.
And, Chris, you're ducking. We did discuss the possibility if that could happen in our last meeting.
Right, yeah. I'm sorry I wasn't here.
Yeah, but that was, that was one of the things that we had asked about.
Okay.
Because 24 feet seemed like an awful lot for a 14-foot garage door at the time. The garage door may be smaller now, but at that time, that was.
I mean, the applicants agreed to do this.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I guess, I've got, I've got a couple of questions about buffers in general. If these were, if this was a project surrounded by county property, we would typically be looking at a type A buffer. Would that be what would be required?
Who was surrounded by county property?
Well, well, I guess it's, well, not county property. I guess we would typically be looking at a type A buffer.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, but this, in this scenario, exactly, if the property line directly abutted, you know, another residential subdivision and didn't have, you know, this leased area situation, then that's correct to be a type A buffer.
Right.
20 feet of landscaping or 12 feet of landscaping would be that.
Right. And our buffer requirements, it doesn't necessarily say that the planting has to be planted. It could be, it could be there. In other words, it could be existing planting and still satisfy the requirements for a buffer, would it not?
That's correct, yeah. There's existing landscaping and it's, and it needs, you know, quantity and the type.
Right, so, so applying that to the 50-foot buffer, you would say that perhaps, given, given the nature of what we got there, it may actually comply with what we would require for a type A buffer.
Yeah, it definitely could. I mean, we, we have not done a thorough, you know, tree-by-tree inventory of it, but because it is, you know, a pretty heavily vegetated area, I know that the applicant's agent, they did go into that area and they have a little more info on what specifically they, they located.
Okay, well, I have some other questions about buffers that I want to.
Just to be, to be clear, you're not typically allowed to use your neighbor's property as a buffer though, right?
Correct.
Any other questions of staff who have this done, we'll ask the applicant?
Good afternoon, Jake Lemings with Roberts Civil Engineering. Stephanie, can you go back? Or can I go back? One, yeah, there we go. Yeah, so just, I'm gonna go over these photos with you real quick. I don't have to answer any questions. I'll have, if you come up here, just point these. So photo one, photo one is with the location kind of where we are, standing at the driveway location. So that's just looking, since, since the last meeting, we actually met with a lot of the community there a week or two ago, and just went over kind of where the buffer stakes are and showing them the 50-foot buffer and just anybody who wanted to go in and kind of see specific stakes on the property. We took them out, tried to answer any questions. Showed them this driveway location. So this is kind of where the driveway, this is where the driveway would be. So, yeah, like she said initially, we were looking at a 24-foot, 12-foot. And since the last meeting, the county's actually gone out and kind of cleared this ditch and kind of did some maintenance on the ditch. So it's already cleared out for kind of the location where the driveway would be coming in. Can you see, we'd be piping, extending this pipe, putting an inlet on it, and then routing it back the other direction. So that location is, it's kind of already cleared now, and that's, that's the location of that, that 12-foot drive. So that's what that first picture shows. Photos two, three, and four shows the location just standing here. There's some pretty large oak trees in this area, so just showing how, how large and how dense that, that 25-foot buffer is through here that would be, being made there. And then the photo five, which was the blown-up one on the other, these are the two least boundary stakes. And Stephanie, can you, can you go to, yeah, there we go. So this is looking at the 50-foot buffer standing where the gravel area would be right now. So this is the two least boundary stakes that are circled in red here, and you can see just how dense it is. There's large oak trees back there, palm meadows and bushes all through that area. So we're proposing to put a six-foot high privacy fence along that property boundary and leaving that undisturbed.
Let me just say, let me say, a privacy fence, what would that fence be made of?
Empty wood, right?
So it'd be opaque, I guess?
Yes.
I guess the question I have is, is looking at the 25-foot buffer on the, on the, on the streets over there.
I only.
On the island drive side. But my concern is, when they build a building, aren't, aren't we going to end up having to clear out some of that in order to get the building built?
So I was talking to Mr. Woodman about that. He can elaborate more, but so we're showing, it's about three feet in here from that, that 25-foot step back to the building, and he can elaborate more, but the type of footers and everything that he would be doing, he's saying he can, he can construct this without impacting that area.
Three feet?
Well, Mr. Chair, if it is impacted, the applicant would be required to reestablish it, wouldn't he not?
Well, that's, that's, and that's the question for us, I guess, is.
Well, it's public land that's got to be maintained.
I would, I would hope that that would be the case, yes.
Sure.
You're going to reestablish a 100-year-old tree? Okay.
Is there a 100-year-old tree on that boundary, sir?
Let's, yeah, let's, let's keep it up here first, so our direct comments to the chair. Yeah, so, so that would be my concern. And I understand that the way metal buildings are built, if you do have siding that has to be placed on that metal siding out soon, it would have to be placed in scatling for various reasons and not, there's gutters that would be placed on the building. So there is going to be some, some impact, I would imagine, on that. I'd grant, if you're careful enough, it would be minimal, but still, it would be some. I would hope that we'd be able to maintain the equivalent of a type A buffer in there. We've got a lot of, a lot of existing vegetation there, and, and, and my hope is that we could treat this like any other commercial site that we would have if it butts a residential street and maintain what would appear to be a type A buffer. I understand that we aren't, we don't necessarily have to plan a lot of stuff because a lot of stuff is there, but my hope would be that it would, it would come back to that and the project is complete.
Yeah, the, I think the, the hope is, and the goal is to not impact it, and that's the belief. And then Mr. Woodman, I believe, is okay with planting back anything in that area to reestablish it. I think he'd be required to by the county if that were the case.
Yeah, well, that's, maybe I should direct this to staff. Would he be required to plant it back?
One thing I'll definitely say is, if there's a question of a tree that could be impacted, because the tree ordinance does apply to this property, the tree ordinance requires anyone doing work on their property to protect any, what we call Glen County trees in the tree ordinance. So there are trees in that, that qualifies Glen County trees in that 25-foot buffer. They will be required not to have an impact on, an adverse impact on those trees. The buffer's a little strange in that that property is leased by the county to the development authority for airport purposes, so it is county property. We have kind of turned over control of it to the airport commission, so they kind of have day-to-day control over that sort of thing. But this is a situation where Mr. Woodman is leasing the property that's outlined in bold, so in the same way that, you know, you're not supposed to go onto your neighbor's property when you're doing construction on your own property, it's sort of a similar situation, unless Mr. Woodman and the airport commission work out the scenario where they allow him to impact that buffer in some way.
Right, I understand. And, and what I'm looking at is just, just a way to, to get neighbors to be compatible. We've got a commercial use, we've got a residential use, and what can we do to, to at least come close to making everybody happy? And I would think buffers and fences are always make good neighbors, I think. So I would hope that we could, we could arrange something like that to have a nice neighborhood, both, both for the commercial operation and both for the residential, the community that's existing there. Any other questions before we open it up? The applicant? This is a, an application of site plan approval. If you've got questions, comments, we'd like to hear them. Please, please come to the podium, state your name.
I'm Diane Schorr, and I am a 27-year resident of Island South. And most of the people here, if you'll raise your hand if you live in Island South. Okay. My question is about the buffer, and I just don't have a pointer, but when I lived there and I talked to David Austin, he told me that when the county gave the property or needed the property to the airport commission, they left these buffers, this 50-foot here and this 25-foot here, for noise abatement from the airport and for aesthetic reasons. And my main objection is this, this right here. I understand that on the property right here, there are two more garage doors. Is that correct?
No, we have not, back there, they're all built.
There were, he showed us.
They're all built.
Yes, we don't.
Right here, okay, yeah. But you have two of them.
This, I'm, I'm.
And at one time.
I'm going to show, I'm going to show, direct the questions to me, and we'll ask the applicant to ask, to answer all those questions at the end of your comments.
And at another time, there was another one on the front, which is now the moved back on the original plans. We would like to move it back to front because we have concerns about traffic on our minor 12-foot wide road. Now, there are 48 residents that live there now or have families, and then there's one that's being built across the street, which we fondly call the Farm Dominion. And I asked Mr. Woodman directly what he was going to use that for. Was he going to load and unload? Because I see a problem there. And he said, no, he's just going to purchase a truck there, maybe five times out of the year. So my question is, this thing's purpose, he's got something like 23 to 28 parking spaces, parking truck there. I don't want anything loading backed up in there, loading into the building, because most trucks that come, that there, that have building, you know, period, are bigger than that little space there. And so they're going to be sticking out in the road. And if you have a particularly large truck and the ambulance comes when I'm having the big room and they can't get through, or somebody else in our neighborhood, it's dangerous. Some of our other members will talk, but, but we would just like that left natural, just the way nature made it, with no, no cut-in, commercial cut-in off of what has been mainly a, well, totally a residential minor street. That's my point. Now, some of the others, can I take one of your questions?
Your honor, thank you, Miss Schorr. Mr. Woodman will ask you to address a lot of these questions when, I hope everyone gets through them. Hope they're commenting, please, sir.
Do you have a question for what you said earlier, so I'll address that. My name's Alan Sabo. My fiance and I live in G33 Highway Drive, and we're new. We've only been here a year, so we'll be long here. My question, go back to what we talked about earlier, you said the 50-foot buffer site on this was the only one that's required? So, so all those large trees that are lining Island Drive, are those potentially going to come out of there?
That, address the question.
Oh, sorry. Are those potentially going to come out of there?
We'll, we'll address that question. Please make your comments, and we'll address all the questions. I'll put that down as a question for you.
All right. So the other thing that they had, that they had mentioned earlier is that, you know, based on what, I've gone through the St. Simon's Island ordinances, and it's basically, you have to, you know, obviously what we talked about earlier is that you do have to apply for a site plan and have all that stuff done before any of this stuff is actually supposed to be done. And I guess that's all been waived in some way. But the, there are, the, the large trees that everybody loves that are along the street here, they're also a bunch, now, they're not on this side, but there's also a bunch of them back in here, and they're probably 20, 25 feet in diameter. So my question is, is that something that will be, if those, so do they build around them? Do they have the capability? I don't know what the rules are on that, but if those are our streets in there, I think they would have to stay. The other thing that I found is that based on the fact that if, if the airport commission is still running this property in some way, the only way that you can move or change a buffer zone is through FAA approval. That's what I found. Now, unless that's changed, there has to be an FAA reason. Not too much shit ever been what happened, I guess, with, there was something that happened a year or two ago where they had passed some trees down because they were too tall and plain for the, for the airport. But that is basically what happened also is that if, if the FAA doesn't even own the property or is controlling the property, that they would need to have the approval in order to move those, to get rid of those trees that are in there. So that's the two questions I have. Is that something? Can we get an ARBRIS out there to see if those trees can be moved or not moved? And is there any protection to them? Because if, if the trees along the face here are protected, which, and again, I don't want to address them correctly, but we're not exact, we're not opposed to this project. We know something's going to go in there, okay? And his project is probably better than 18 billion other things that could possibly go in there. But like you said, working in harmony would be the best thing to do. If we could simply leave the trees that line the road, which apparently it sounds like they want to do anyway, if we could leave the large trees and we could just put this back on the front where it was, I think that would solve 99.9% of problems. Okay, thank you, sir.
Teddy Lawless, here on the island for 27 years too. And, you know, in all those 27 years, this little gem of a community was just hardly anybody knew it was there. And the tree line drive, I know I'm being redundant, but the tree line drive going in is, it gives it a shade and a buffer and some privacy. My concern though, too, is, and I've seen it behind the bridge flood as well, which is right there, is the flooding and the drainage. It's, it's all wrecked and stuff back there. So, you know, you say you're going to have a, a pipe come in here and going up there, it's only until we see it working that we'll know that everyone has any creative issues that go in Island South because of this project.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I have one more thing I forgot to say.
You may say it. You may say it.
In doing a lot of investigation, I find that there's a little slipper in here that belongs to the Airport Authority on the other side of the road. And where they're building the Farm Dominion, they were denied a cut-in because it was a buffer zone. They had to create Rosa Dorsey line to go in there. Now, all I'm saying is, if they were denied a cut-in, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And that was a residential property and not a commercial property. This will be the first commercial property on Island Drive. And if, we know the building's going to go there, we're not opposing him as a neighbor. We just would like to reconfigure this garage doors and get the door with this cut-in and leave the buffer zone the way it's supposed to be.
Thank you.
That's it.
Anyone else? Jake, Mr. Woodman, either one or both, maybe?
I'll address a few of things. Mr. Woodman can address the others. Just start with the parking of the truck back here. I did not say I would be parking back here. I'll get deliveries or unload my truck maybe five times a year, and it might be that truck is the knowledge.
What sort of, what sort of things would you be loading there?
Childs' materials, towel, I think there's stuff for the child sites.
What size is the garage door now?
It's, the garage door's going to be no higher than eight feet. The building is 22.
Oh, wow.
Our first floor is at 10 feet. I can't have a door higher than eight feet, because it's going to get standard doors in my house.
Right.
With, well, the hats, if that.
Yeah, well, it can't be much wider.
When we showed this as the water, that was per county requirements. That was the only reason we did it. I didn't want it that wide initially. That's why we spoke with the engineer about reducing it to a, a little more usable. And so we don't impact, we don't want to impact this. And to address the question of anything in this buffer zone, I don't have any intention whatsoever to mess with it. If I can leave everything in this buffer zone, that's 100%, that's it. We do have to impact the buffer here to address the drainage, to be able to get this water where it needs to go. So we do have to get in it there. But as far as my construction goes, this, it is a steel building. Everything will be stood off the forebears from the slab and work with inside the perimeter. We want to see our lease boundary for any of that.
What size are delivery trucks going to be?
I generally don't get deliveries there, as you'd ask in FedEx. Yeah, it's not, on some rare occasion, I have something come in on a tractor trailer, it's going to the job site. I don't take big deliveries there. It typically be pickup truck deliveries and my equipment that is there. The question the gentleman had about anything being waived, we haven't waived anything. We've gone through a proper procedure, and that's why we're here now. We've done, we've been working on this for probably six, eight months at least, just trying to get practical and planning. We go through a lot of, a lot of engineering and a lot of trouble to try to fit a building. As you can tell, this property has a lot of constraints on every single side. And we've gone through a lot of trouble to fit a building this financially feasible to put in there and these parking requirements without having to get any reductions there. So we've really tried to fit something in there without impacting everything else. Mentioned the trees being untouched, drained, we have addressed that as well with engineering. We've shown either a underground retention pond or the underground drainage. Just to store or have any water that we have on our property or receive on our property from the impervious materials.
Mr. Woodman, it relates to that, though, isn't it going to have to be underground though? I mean, you don't have any room there for a extension pond, do you?
There is a, we have some other, and I'll let him elaborate more on it, but there is some area here to where we could potentially get it in, and that's, I'll let the engineers speak more than that. That's areas for a piece.
We'll ask the engineer to comment on that.
And to the comment about the access over here that was denied, it's my understanding that they didn't want to go through the process and never applied for that timely access to the buffer. We're going through that process and actually, you know, we have anything above our request to get it, we're supposed to.
Let me, while we're on that subject, with that staff, are you aware of any application that was made for a cut on the other side of the road for access to that property?
No, we're not aware of any. We could check our files, though, and see, but... I know, I'm not sure if it's part of the Rosa, is the Rosa Dorsey tract, there was a subdivision that had an access road for several lots, and that might be part of that.
But that's planted already, is it not? I mean, it hasn't approved flat, right? There is access to that.
Left one with gold, is that?
Yeah.
Off Island Drive.
Yeah, I think actually, if I recall correctly, there, I think there was kind of several owners. I want to say there was airport property, and there's like a Silver County property, and I think, yeah, I think it was a matter of crossing a couple of different ownerships to get access to it, so that's where that road was created to act as all those lots.
So at this point, as I understand, you're committing that there will be nothing damaged or ruined in that buffer area or along the road. You have questions?
Right, that is our intent, to not damage the natural buffer, we get it as natural as possible. And as mentioned, if anything is damaged by some reason, we'll obviously replace that if it are. Just as I do on any other job site, damage that may be reduced, we replace it once, that's.
So you're willing to make a commitment to that, if we make that part of a motion, right?
Yeah, if I damage anything within that buffer, you know, that's, I'll replace anything. Obviously, this is the only area that we really have intent of being in that buffer to address the drainage here and to put in an access on the backside.
Right, and that open, I don't know how long that is, was it about 50 feet? Maybe I can ask Jake, how long that open ditch is there, Jake?
It's, yeah, it's probably about 40 feet. About 40 feet. Yes, because this is a, this is a 40-foot line here, so.
Okay, so about 40, 40, maybe 50 at the most, if you include the links to the island. Okay, it just gives me, I mean, with such a small piece of ditch to maintain, seems like it would be, it's unofficial to all parties if we could figure out a way to close that up.
Mr. Woodman, I know in the last, last one, when you came in front of us, you explained to us why you couldn't have the entrance, or why it wasn't, why the entrance, and there was some ability. Could you tell us that, why again?
Because of parking, and I'm not, there was no one forgot to address. I'm not sure, we have not submitted a plan to show any garage door on the front of the building. The only ones we have submitted, showed it on the rear and the two on the end. Our parking and main entrance is on that side. It's not practical to have a garage door in front of a curb where my primary staff or guests, clients, whatever, come in. It's just not practical to have it on the front of the building.
I have a question that could be constructive, if that helps.
Okay, direct it, and I'll ask Mr. Woodman.
Okay. I don't know, I would ask him, does he want or need all those parking spaces? Because it sounds like maybe if we could get him some help on the number of parking spaces he has to have, maybe we could, maybe it could help change, or maybe it could help the engineers or something where he wouldn't have to have that, because it sounds like all the parking spaces has taken a majority of what he needs to use. Maybe we could cut a couple parking spaces out of the requirement? I don't know, is that possible?
We'll ask.
Okay.
As it relates to that, and relates to our last staff first. Staff, is it possible that we could grant a variance to parking for this position?
So really, your only latitude is granting the variance to parking is if they're committing a certain percentage of open space. So I think you can do up to, I think it's up to 10% for sure. And then I think there's something else for 25%. But let me see where they're, so they said they're required to have 20, and they're showing 20. And they might, on their site, be able to do a 10% open space, I mean, it's a pretty tight site, and have a reduction. Let me look up that, hey, real quick, and see.
I've got it here. You can authorize a reduction by not more than 10%. But for every parking space that you eliminate, the plan has to show 450 square feet of undeveloped area.
Right.
To offset, so for every parking space you, you know, if you reduce it by two, then you got to have 900 square feet of open space.
Yeah, so.
It can't be, it can't be offset to allow a bigger building or, you know.
Right, right. It's a lot more green space. Yeah. I don't know how practical it would be. Two spots isn't going to help you really allow. You get two spots would be 200 square, 400 square feet. So we need twice that, right?
You got to replace it with 900.
You got to replace it with 900 square feet.
So we may not.
But this site looks like it is, and the percentage coverage is, it is pretty high. Let me ask you, you need to be here.
Where?
That's for them, please. Explain to us your drainage, and drainage indeed.
So the biggest thing is, so this water that's coming through, there's some water that's coming through this eight-inch pipe here and it's routing through this ditch. So since the county's come out and kind of maintained this ditch, it is flowing better. Now, all of this water ultimately ends up to a system. The thing goes down to the major channel that runs down and wraps around to the ultimate outfall.
That major system is an open ditch.
It is an open ditch, that's right. It's an open channel. So, well, after it gets into this pipe system, it gets to that open ditch and then wraps around. So, but for our site, you know, we're going to meet the county requirements, and we're going to detain, you know, the pre-verse post, so make sure that, you know, as the site's sitting right now and the runoff off the site, that's what we're allowed to do. So there's not going to be any increase in flow downstream, and you're not going to see any effects of this development downstream. We've got to meet the county requirements for that. And during civil plans, we have to provide a drainage report explaining all that and all our calculations to the county, and it goes through the engineering department for their review. But the plan is to do a underground detention system here, is what we've already, we've already sized this. At the site plan level, you don't even have to go through and do the math to make sure it works. But since this site is so condensed, we wanted to make sure Mr. Woodman, that he had the room to do it. And it does sit there. We also evaluated potentially putting a pond with walls in this area because it gets so tight. And you can also make that work, but the intent is, you know, as the site plan shows, the underground, but there was also the room here to construct a pond if, you know, if necessary, but.
But that would require, that would require clearing out that corner, that would have done.
That would.
There are several, it looks like smaller trees there.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Some trees there and a little vegetation and so forth.
Which is due within our lease property boundary.
I understand. The last question I've got, this is just a question. How practical would it be to get rid of that ditch? The open 40-foot long piece of ditch that we've got left.
So initially, we had the plan, like the last site plan you showed, or we showed you last meeting, it actually came down and we connected back over to the system to actually fill in that ditch. Since then, we were trying to minimize impacts of this whole area, so we were going to extend this pipe, pipe over, and daylight the pipe here just to, since the county's already maintained this at this point, and just daylight it there so it could flow, the ditch can maintain, then it would go back into another pipe. So, yeah, it's very feasible to just extend that pipe and connect it, connect it down. And some kind of evaluate what's the best option during the engineering side.
One thing that would allow, I mean, if that could happen, and number one, it would get rid of a maintenance issue for the county to maintain that open ditch. And another thing, it would allow some vegetation to come back over that area. It's a pretty big chunk of ground there when you look at it. And the county, if they have to maintain it, they're going to, they're going to have to keep that clear of your vegetation. So that corner of the building would be pretty well exposed to Island Drive. So I would, as much as, as much as possible, I'd like to see that happen. I realize you've got another, another phase to go through for your construction plans and so forth, but.
Just one point, is this, this buffer, for whatever reason, I mean, this is, there is access to this parcel here.
Right.
And it's cleared all through here, practically cleared.
Right, and that, and that is true. The, the. Glen, Glen Visual Arts does have access all over that, that Island Drive now. And that's, I guess that would be considered a commercial use. Any other questions we have for the applicant? One question I have for staff, just, just so we all understand, there's no, there's no setback required along that, that one side of the building? Building setback?
Along Island Drive?
Right. Their leasehold, there's no setback required in the leasehold?
I think, actually, I think it was, I think the buffer takes care of the, yeah, the setback, if I recall correctly.
I mean, it's written in the PD that it's a 20-foot setback from the actual street, is the wording. So it, it doesn't even get into the buffer.
Okay, so it's, so it's from the right-of-way line?
That's right. Well, no, it's actually from the street line, not the right-of-way line. It says in PD from the street.
So because that buffer is 25 feet, then, yeah, that's taken.
Okay, you're building setback, but technically it'd be in the buffer, but it's, well.
From the street, from the pavement?
That's what PD takes this.
Yeah, it's a little different than most of our screens, yeah.
Well, typically, when it says street, in my, in my way, I think we always mean the right-of-way, even though the language is, it reminds us, we need to be very clear when we write the documents. It's always, either way, it's 25 feet. Okay, all right, well, thank you. You need, you need anyone else?
I'd like to ask you to ask Mr. Woodman, would he consider moving that garage door so we don't have our community disrupted? What he was talking about.
Michelle, I don't want to cut you off, but I think you paid twice, twice at the podium.
Well, he could unload in the other, the base, that's all I'm going to say.
Okay.
An option comment that moving it, that we just established is not an option with, reduction in parking. We can't, can't be done progressively moving, it's not really an option.
Well, you got to have three.
And that, and right now, again, staff, just to be clear, and at this point, public, public comment, the question period is closed. So now, we'll bring you up to the commission. Just to be clear, there is no prohibition against putting that driveway into that site off Island Drive.
That's correct, yeah, Island Drive is a public road, so there is no county code prohibition on that.
Right, and if we were dealing with a county, a required east or required buffer, typically we would allow that, would we not?
That is correct, yeah, we do allow the driveway to go through the buffer.
So that's, that's, that's clear. That's our understanding, I think, as a commission, that driveways can go through buffers.
Mr. Reed, you did verify that Art Center has an entrance on Island Drive as well.
That's correct. One, one other thing, too, is just, just to be clear, the, I lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
Anyway, I don't have anything else.
This chair, are we open for discussion now?
Yes, we are.
If I may, I know we're trying to find a good compromise here that works for some residential residences versus this industrial park. I think we need to acknowledge, you know, when Island South was developed, it was developed next to an industrial park. And access was provided through the industrial park to get there. And through the years, this road, we've become to think of it as a residential road with nice green buffers, you know, trees and all that. But at the end of the day, you know, that developer was given a deal that the county provided access through their industrial park to get to that development. And now we are living with the conflict of that industrial park building out by, okay? And it appears that, whoa, wait a minute, we've got an industrial road we're wreaking havoc on. And that's not the case. So, you know, 30 years ago, this should have never been allowed, residential neighborhood access through an industrial park. That's just. So, so, you know, 30 years ago, this should have never been allowed, residential neighborhood access through an industrial park, that's just.
I do, I do remember when, when, I've been here long enough to remember when it was built.
Correct.
And yes, it was, it was kind of, it was kind of a different thing at the time.
It was a landlocked piece of area, and the, the only way it could be developed was to get, go through the airport.
Right.
And that was granted, and now we're living with this conflict.
Right, well, I guess, I guess the good news is, is this is the last piece, I, I believe, of, of airport property that abuts, abuts Island Drive, is that, is that, is that not the case?
A butt, it goes through, the island ride goes through the airport.
Mr. Burke, is that, is, is that correct?
That's correct, except for that little sliver on the other side of the road.
Do you have an objection? I'm sure, I'm sure the airport wants to, wants to take advantage of every piece they got, but that's a very small piece, isn't it?
Extremely small piece, a problematic piece, yeah.
So, my point is, we're trying to find a workable arrangement, and, and we've got the compromise. We've got an industrial property, the airport leases, client deserves access, it's allowable with the zoning. And yet we have residents that are used to traveling down that road to get home.
I think my only concern is, is just, it's, I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad they reduced the size of the driveway from 24. That's, that's wider than most streets on St. Simons, by the way. We've got streets on St. Simons only 18 feet wide, so 12 feet, I think, is, 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 is an improvement. They did, they did shuttle us that they were going to add some landscaping around each side of that street, which I think would, would be helpful. Be the only other thing I wish they could do is figure out a way to close the ditch. I think, I think that would have, in time, have a, have a way of just concealing, concealing that building entirely with the exception of the, of the relatively small 12 foot swatch that's cut through that, through that buffer. The other thing too, Mr. Woodman has, has committed that he would fix any issues regarding the existing buffer there. You know, I would, I would expect him, at his word, that he would do that, so, so that's, that's kind of where I am. My, my two points is just the nature of that buffer, 25 feet, and, and, I don't know, engineering, as engineering goes, goes forward, if there was a way to close the ditch, I'd like to see that.
Is there a, a side yard, backyard of that bridge club, right around between the dumpster and that building? You know?
No.
Now, there's other, I just wonder if we don't, I mean, it's a six foot fence and then the dumpster, I think it's gonna be seven foot tall, we don't need to have an eight foot fence behind the dumpster. If it's viewing, I mean, there's windows back there, patio back there?
I've walked back there, I don't think it's, it's, it's somewhat cleared out, but I don't think there's, there's any active use of it.
In fact, I'll elaborate on that, so if, the dumpster something here most likely will not be a standard partial style. The dumpster is most likely just a green, green, rolling trash can, typically. I do wanna point out, as just once here, this is a, a grassy area behind it, but there is an existing equivalent across this side where there's sidewalk approach, it's, it's property boundary, that we're dealing with, and that's the price that's across here to help offer that as well.
Can we make a motion?
I would like a motion.
I make a motion to approve SP 247.
I'll say it.
Motion in the, in the second. Any discussion on the motion? I guess the only thing I, I would, I would, you know, I would like to propose is that, is that we, we add, add to that Mr. Woodman's, the, its buffer.
That's kind of requirement already unspoken, isn't it?
Let's add it to the, to the motion if possible.
Will it, will it, will it refrain from the motion?
Well, you've got a motion and a second, so you have an active motion.
Okay, well, let's, let me do this, I would like to propose an amendment to the motion. That, that we ask Mr. Woodman to repair any, any damage that happens to that buffer, any area that's cleared out of the buffer.
And he will repair it.
He will repair it.
Second.
Okay, so let's, we've gotta do it in reverse order, so we'll call.
It's an amendment to the motion.
Right, so the first vote will be whether to amend.
Right, so, so the first, the first vote is to the amendment, everyone understand?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor of the amendment? All right, passes, now we'll, we'll ask for a vote on the motion, all in favor of the motion, Mr. Kay, who's unanimous?
Thank you.
VD before you get to that.
Keep on marching. So we do, we prepare. This is, this is gonna be as hard as it works. All right, this is, this is. This is VD 24 dash one dash 215 Mallory, Mallory, considering a village preservation application approval for storefront signage at 215 Mallory Street. Parcel 0404636, decided zone village mixed use, D and M Chris Morgan applicant, and Jesse Strater, Jesse Strater Company.
Stephanie Lee, planning manager, this is our VP 241. This is 215 Mallory Street, so this is a village preservation design review for some new, proposing new signage for this property. They are proposing to do eight individual tenant signs, this is the pure village market, so there's multiple businesses within, within one space here. If IPC does approve of this design, I will note that, that because of the number of signs, they do need to get a variance for the number of signs. So that would still need to go to the Board of Appeals for a variance to be granted, and often we're kind of, you know, opposed with, you know, which should come first. A lot of times for the village, we like the IPC to take a look at it first, so you can look at the concept, decide if from a design perspective, you feel it's appropriate before the applicant goes to the extent of applying for a variance and going through that, that process. And so, like I said, they are proposing eight signs, and the most that can be on this building facade are three signs. And so here's the existing pure village market, so there are two signs that hang below the awning, and then they do have a directory sign that's next to the door. And then here's some photos of the adjacent property and some other signage. And then, this was submitted, the applicant did, I gave them another image that I can pull up on the screen, but as you can see above the windows, there's areas where they're showing the logo, and so that would be where they would have each of the additional signs for all the businesses within there. This just kinda shows what that would look like.
So the eight signs are in addition to the existing pure village market, so?
That is my understanding, that the existing signage would stay.
Yes, they'd take the two hanging signs down.
Yeah, the hanging signs in the awning would stay there as, as well, so this would be in addition to what's there now.
Well, we would, I'll, I'll address that.
Yeah, we'll address that, and then I'll, I'll see if I can pull up the other image, but. So this shows the, the different companies that are within this business, the different businesses, and what the logos would look like on those eight signs. If I may ask any questions, you all have, and applicant is here as well, Mr. Morgan.
Any, any questions for, for staff, or we ask the applicant to, to give his presentation?
Yes, sir. I'm Chris Morgan, registered agent for 215 Mallory. I think it's all pretty sub-explanatory, I can address any questions that you all have in specifics. If you do have, well, our goal is, is to increase visibility of patrons of each and every one of these businesses that we have long-term leases, leases with occupancy suites inside of our building on the outside. So, as of right now, all they have is the business index, which doesn't have any of their individual branding and isn't eligible from the road. We've gone back and forth with staff and, you know, Chuck Flowers and a couple of other people to identify what could be possible in this, you know, it's probably about it. Because of where we're at and, you know.
Right. Are all the signs gonna be on the line drawing you showed, there was four squares over each side, are they all gonna be squares, they're gonna be?
Yeah, they're gonna be 18 by 18 square, so they're all gonna be symmetrical, okay.
And the two hanging signs, will they come down?
Those are our current tenants that, since that slash angle, most of us are company, we're gonna give them the option, so if they want to move them to the, to the front, like all the rest of them that are proposed, then we can allow them to relocate what they currently have, if they wanna keep them, you know, so.
So one or the other, or potentially both?
Uh, one or the other, okay. No, we won't have, you know, double.
So if they kept the hanging signs, they'd only be six?
Correct.
I'll ask, I'll ask staff, what, what latitude do we have to, to grant this?
So your, your latitude here is, is design and concept, so what a possible condition would be if you all are, you know, wanna, wanna grant designer view approval for this, then the condition would be that the variance would need to be approved by the Board of Appeals.
So, so, so right now, the plan is that this would go to the Board of Appeals?
Correct, yeah, and what we, what a staff, we would pass on to the Board of Appeals is that the, you know, IPC approves this as a concept and design, you know, pending the variance approval.
Well, one correction to that, I believe it's the Board of Commissioners that hears signed variance appeals, rather than the Board of Appeals.
Really?
Yeah, thank you very much, yes, I'd go to the Board of Commissioners, not the Board of Appeals.
And you're leaving, then? Okay, you have questions for the applicant? I, I guess just as a matter of discussion, I did the quick, quick math, 18 by 18 inch sign is 2.25 square feet. If you added up all of those signs, it's probably less than 24 square feet, which is what we've acquired. However, we've already got a 24 foot, 20, 20, 24 square foot sign on the building, so this would be doubling up the, the amount of signage. I would, I would be, I would be amiable to granting this if we eliminate the other, the hanging signs entirely, no option, in other words. You take them out and then we will approve that as the design.
You mean the hang, the hanging signs, not, not the, not the roof sign?
Right, right, there's.
Yeah, there's. There's. There's.
And then he would still have to take it to the Board of, to the.
Commission for a variance.
For a variance. It, it, this could have a, kind of a, this could set a precedent, I'm afraid.
Well, we have a really unique situation here because we're the only building that has this mixed use in the county that I'm aware of. There's, there's commercial buildings that are, you know, general office and commercial space, but there's no other buildings in the county that have this many tenants and occupants that have serving restaurants, retail, real estate, you know, jewelry, quite a bit.
Yeah, well, there's, there's antique stores that have, you know, booths stuck in there, and that's a similar sort of a, a thing, all those generally all.
You said they's a long-term lease?
Yes, sir, yes, our, our leasing company does not do any short-term leases, so we're all long-term lease.
So currently, the way you handle that is a, is, is the small sign that's by the door, right, with your different tenants?
Yes, and that's, that's another reason why we don't wanna combine all these onto one marquee or something else, we wanna be able to change them out, you know, if, you know, unfortunately, we do have changing commercial tenants.
Would that require a, a re, a re implication?
Just to change the, the face now, they can do that, as long as it stays the same size and everything?
With these being lit?
No, I don't, I don't think that we would.
And there's lighting, and there's lighting in the canopy, is there?
Because, because the county has been so generous to update continuously this whole entire corridor, we have plenty of lighting at night.
Thank you, sir. We may, we may call you back, but like.
Okay, yeah.
We'll see if we can hash it out up here.
That sounds good.
Yes, anyone here that would like to comment on this?
Yeah, this is a public hearing item.
This is a public hearing item. Why is this a public hearing item?
Does the state code change?
Oh, I know that, but, but why was it the first item of a public hearing item?
It was, but you had your public hearing last month.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'm Matthew Permore, Islander newspaper, lived for all my life, I'm a patron of one of these businesses, and if you don't know that the business is in there, you don't know, and I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Permore.
I got a question for staff, just a moment, so. Stevie, could you show us those neighboring properties again? Sorry, are we, are we closing the public hearing?
Uh, yeah, yes, I do.
I guess so.
Look, you would make a comment. I didn't think so.
Yeah, the one, like, the one, you, you passed by him, yeah, go to that next one, there you go. I mean, look at those windows, they're absolutely full of stuff, you know, they're all adding eight signs. I think it's pretty practical, the building is pretty clean looking, the, the pure market villages and I, I don't have any problem with it. I do agree with you that the hanging signs should come down in replacement.
I'm in agreement with that. Take down the hanging signs.
All right, make a motion? I make a motion to approve the two hanging signs are removed.
If the two hanging signs are removed.
Yes, okay. Wait, I make a motion to, is it?
There's a proclamation regarding the variance application.
I move to approve application VP 24 dash one with modifications that the two hanging signs that are currently existing will be removed.
I'll second the motion, that's stated.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done, we'll ask for a vote, all those in favor, please, in.
All right, thanks, sir.
Okay, motion to.
I'll look at the motion that you got.
All in favor, maybe?